And with that, I'm going to ask that you all stand with us for just a moment of silence, and as well the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Beth, I'll ask if you can take it with your call.
Granquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Muirin?
Here.
Moaning?
Here.
Fauss?
Here.
File?
Here.
Okay, and before we go on, if I could, I'm going to look to you Chief Ordus and ask if you will come forward and make aware this community of a recent activity that happened within your group today.
Certainly, Mayor, I'll be glad to welcome Mayor and Council. What happened at our last staff meeting was Mayor Fuken was commenting about several things, and as she prepares for her departure as the mayor, and Mayor-elect Moaning were there, we're talking about some of the things that were relevant that often don't get shared, and perhaps we failed in that, and I failed in that, when that occurs, and it's regarding significant promotions that occur within our divisions. And the suggestion was made that once those occur, that perhaps we would simply bring them here, do a brief introduction so the Mayor and Council know who those folks are. And so, we were in the midst of that when our meeting happened the other night, and so, we had a highly competitive process. Ten outstanding individuals competed for a position of captain on B shift, replacing Steve Bettendorf, who left us after 35 years, 20 of those years as the captain on B shift. So, significant shoes to fill, but I wanted to introduce you all to the new captain on B shift, Mr. Lance Grothee. So Lance, if you would please stand. I would ask the Mayor and Council to give him the support, the same exact way you did Steve and the rest of our staff, and we appreciate it very, very much. So, thank you, thank you.
Appreciate that very, very much, and to all of you, to all 10 of you, the Chief has advised us certainly would have been great, were great candidates, and anyone could have probably filled the shoes. It's always a tough decision, but I commend you all for the commitment that you make to the city of Norfolk. So, thank you for being here. To you, Mr. Grothee, congratulations. So, thanks. Before we take the next action, will you let me have just a moment of the opportunity to say to this community as a whole, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be your mayor for the last eight years. It has been quite a ride, I gotta tell ya, but certainly it has been strong with such a great staff to work with. And I know we've had our ups and downs, folks, but as city staff and as elected officials, and certainly I gotta say, it's been pleasant to be able to work through many, many of the issues that we've had before us, and we've done it together, and I believe we've achieved much. So, I thank you again for the opportunity of being your mayor, it's been an honor and certainly a privilege. I also, I'd be amiss if I didn't say thank you to my Daco's family, who's given me full support to be here for the last eight years. They've been right along with me in my efforts here, and I can't, I can't say enough about Amy, who is a Daco employee that worked directly with the city staff as we went forward and tried to make sure that this mayor was always in the right place at the right time, because let me tell ya, there were times that I wasn't. But between certainly Beth and Amy, they had me where I needed to be. And again, to my own family that chose not to be here tonight because they thought it 'd probably get a little emotional for me, a little bit emotional, but certainly I'm, I'm pleased, I think I'm looking forward to what tomorrow morning is going to be as I walk out of here tonight. I'm just proud to be a part of what's been a great eight years. So, thank you for that, and with that, I'm going to ask for Judge Stoffer, if you will come forward and take over.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to administer the oath of office to all of those new individuals at this time or taking new positions at this time. There are a couple of spots where I will pause, one of them right at the very beginning. All of you will be sworn in at the same time, so the first part will be where you will say your name, and then there'll be another part where you will state the office that you will be taking. So, if all those who are being sworn in, well then I guess there would be also, there's a place for you to sign on the oath of office, and then I will sign below that, and so I guess I will leave that up to Ms. Deck to tell us how she wants to do that, for sure. And then also, once all of the, once the document has been finished, if I, I'll probably just hang on to it and then turn it to Ms. Deck, because she does have a correction that she needs to make to the document before she gives it back to you, so. Right, so all of you who are being sworn in, if you can stand, please. Yep, okay. Why don't you come on up here? I think when we're done, maybe if, we'll just go one at a time, maybe come over here and sign the document, and I'll sign it, and I don't know if there's anybody that's taking pictures individually or anything, but we'll do that as well. All right, raise your right hand, please. Aye, please state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska. And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Born and domestic. Born and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the same. To the same. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or for purpose of evasion. Or for purpose of evasion. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. And impartially. And impartially. Perform the duties of the office. Perform the duties of the office. Of. Of. According to the law. According to the law. And the best of my ability. And the best of my ability. And I further swear. And I further swear. That I do not advocate. That I do not advocate. Nor am I a member. Nor am I a member. Of any political party. Of any political party. Or organization. Or organization. That advocates the overthrow. That advocates the overthrow. Of the government. Of the government. Of the United States. Of the United States. Or of this state. Or of this state. By force or violence. By force or violence. And that during such time. And that during such time. As I am in this position. As I am in this position. I will not advocate. I will not advocate. Nor become a member. Nor become a member. Of any political party. Of any political party. Or organization. Or organization. That advocates the overthrow. That advocates the overthrow. Of the government. Of the government. Of the United States. Of the United States. Or of this state. Or of this state. By force or violence. By force or violence. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judge. Carry on, sir.
I didn't know Sue was going to leave. I had a speech, Mayor Sue come back. I did, I did want to say one thing before we get started here. I saw this quote the other day, and it made me think of Mayor Sue. It's from President Theodore Roosevelt. "The most important single ingredient in the formula of success is knowing how to get along with people." And I think Mayor Sue lived that in her years of service as community, she devoted literally years of selfless service to the betterment of Norfolk, and we all really owe her our gratitude and our thanks. So, maybe one more time, we recognize you. Thank you. I do look forward to building upon the foundation that she's built and trying to meet the level of expectation and success that so many people have worked to create in this community. So, with that, here we go. We will first take roll call.
Mm-hmm.
For the consent agenda?
No. For everybody being here.
Okay, roll call again, we have to start over. All right.
Granquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Muirin?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Fauss?
Here.
File?
Here.
All right, we'll begin with a motion to approve before us the recommended action. Okay, bear with me here, I'm sorry. The selection by the City Council.
Oh.
Of the President of the Council, hold on Dick, sorry about that. And in doing so, we'll open the floor to nominations.
I would nominate Mr. Langy for another two-year term.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations at this time? Hearing none. That is good.
Well, now we have to vote on.
We have to, okay.
Who's the nomination ceases?
Okay, yeah.
That's okay.
We'll entertain a motion to cease nominations.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And roll call.
If anybody want to call. Granquist?
Are we voting here, or yes?
While I'm waiting, nobody's, okay.
I'm up there.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, uh, affirmative, uh, voting yes, nomination ceases.
Josh's fault.
Yeah, we'll get better at this point. Okay. Congratu-, uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Another two years of service of our City Council President. Now, yeah, now we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda before us?
Solemn.
Your Honor, may I?
Yes, please approach.
I'd request that item 11 on the consent agenda be removed from the agenda for tonight, and we'll bring it back in two weeks. I was just informed today of a small change the developer wants to make, and staff feels like they want to have a look at it, so it'd probably be best just to wait two weeks. Records, fourth edition.
Thank you. Okay, so we would now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number 11.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
All right. Now the approval of the full agenda, entertain a motion for the approval of the full agenda.
Solemn.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
All right. Public hearings. Okay, prior to that, our action number 21, special presentations, presentation by Tim Kealan of Hannah Kealan on the Norfolk Housing Study.
Do you all have a copy of the summary?
Yes, we do.
Okay, congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
New counsel, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing me this opportunity this evening. I want to take a short bit of time to, I'm Tim Kealan with Hannah Kealan Associates. This is Lonnie Dixon with Hannah Kealan Associates. We're a community planning, research consulting firm, and I want to thank you for providing us the opportunity to work in your fine community. What we have completed is a community housing study, which also addresses specific strategies associated with affordable housing, but the housing study itself addresses price products and housing types for all income, all come, income levels in the community. This is a, this is a project that was funded jointly by the Norfolk Housing Agency and the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority. Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, commonly referred to as NIFA, is an organization actively involved in housing, and one of the things they provide is a housing study grant to communities, and the agency applied and was granted a grant to do this study, and we were fortunate enough to be selected as a consult to do that. As a consulting firm, we do a lot of the comprehensive plans and the BLYT studies and the housing studies, but there again, are good fortune to have the opportunity to work with Norfolk on this project. Summary, there is a completed study, and we're going to ask that that be put on the website, different websites in the community, for everybody to have the opportunity to see and read and, you know, and get involved in the whole discipline of housing in the community. Did I introduce you? Okay. Want to make sure I did that. Lonnie's a major helper in the community. But anyway, what you all have is a summary of the study itself, and I want to take just a couple of minutes to kind of breeze through it and answer any questions that you have. We try to put large documents in summary capacity so that you can do this. I first want to start, though, by talking about, we had a wonderful housing steering committee made up of residents in the community, different agencies. Gary was very helpful, Tom with Northeast Economic Development, Valerie was actively involved, and she really assisted us in tying together this housing study with your new comprehensive plan, which was very helpful to us. And so, comprehensive plan has a little longer timeline to it. The housing study that we prepare has a shorter timeline because of the economics associated with housing, so it's a five-year, a five-year study or plan for consideration. It's also a document that identifies a lot of qualitative information through surveys that we conducted. It also has a lot of statistical information, like quantitative data that we've gathered for the community as it relates to housing, but it's, most importantly, it's very implementation-oriented. So, it's a study, but then it's implementation-oriented, and I'll explain that to you. But the summary you have, we first start out with a, you know, an introduction of some of the unique housing characteristics of the community. Lonnie did this, he did a terrific job with it. There's more of this type of information in the full study itself, but you have some unique neighborhoods, you have new neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, you have some very unique older neighborhoods with wonderful housing that needs to reach into that whole activity of housing preservation and things. I turn you to, let's see, let's go to page, talk a little bit about citizen participation in the process, I'm on page 10. Again, we had the housing steering committee, we met four or five times, got, we took them information, they gave us good, you know, good feedback or input on that information, kind of steering us in the right direction. Good organizations were involved with that process, community leaders, realtors, Andy with economic development, it's just good participation. We also conducted some surveys in the community, we conducted a citizen housing survey where every citizen had the opportunity, or every household had the opportunity to participate in a survey. That's on page 12. We had around 400 participants in that survey itself, which is, you know, it's a good number. I mean, if I was to hold a meeting with 400 individuals, it'd be a pretty good-sized meeting, so it had the opportunity to have 400 households or individuals weigh in on that process. We also had a workforce housing need survey that we conducted with several industries in the community, and we had, we had a total of around 250 employees of different groups and organizations and businesses participate in that particular survey, and that dealt specifically with you and the workforce, what type of housing would you like to have? If you don't live in the community, would you like to? If you do live in the community, would you like to change your housing, and so on and so forth. There again, we got a lot of good input on that. This workforce housing is a very big issue right now in all communities, especially communities like Norfolk, getting enough housing out there for the different workforce, for the expansion of your new businesses and things like that. We also had an elderly survey, but we only had 35 participants, and it was kind of tough just getting out there to get some of the seniors to participate in that. But the study itself concentrates on a continuum of housing care and need for seniors or elderly persons in the community. This is extremely important, and when you get into the goals and policies and the goals and the action steps of the study itself, you'll see where it addresses the need for a continuum of housing for seniors. You have a wonderful supply of housing for seniors in the community, but as we all age in place, we'll probably need a few more different housing types. On page 17, we talk about, we also had some listening sessions where the general public was invited and got some good input, but on page 17, we talked a little bit about the housing goals and action steps. I'm not going to go through all these. The primary pieces are on that first page, we have goals and action steps associated with a community-wide housing development initiative, new housing developments is a goal two, rehabilitation and preservation of the existing owner and renter housing stock. We also have goals and quite a bit of information in the study itself as it relates to downtown housing opportunities. We originally had a study done for the downtown, we kind of capitalized on that and built upon that. Financing activities for housing development in the community, impediments to fair housing choice, and then also housing study review and implementation. So, these are the categories of the goals and the action steps themselves. I'm going to touch on just the housing development piece a little bit here. Our study for the next five years, and working with the steering committee, we go through a lot of statistical gymnastics, and we get a lot of input from the community, and we came up with a number of 762 new housing units in the community over the next five years. 762. That's based upon standard growth, population growth over those next five years. This would include around 444 owner units and around 308 renter units. We also address a thing called an economic development boost. Communities like Norfolk experience those boosts. Out of nowhere, for example, there'll be a new business or industry we want to locate in the community, and so we've taken that in consideration in the housing study too over the next five years, where we identify up to 894 new housing units over the next five years, based upon an economic boost of close to 500-plus new employees. So, just to kind of cover our bases, which planners like to do, we have that standard trend analysis which identifies housing demand, but we also have that economic development boost associated with that. So, I'm not going to read through these, but I think you'll find them interesting, reading through the different goals and action steps. To turn you to, bring you a little further along here, I want to take a look at page 29. We include, and I talked earlier, mentioned earlier, about the implementation piece associated with the housing study. It's a five-year housing study, so it has to kind of come out of the chute running, and the goals talk about a housing community partnership made up of different organizations that should be involved in the implementation of housing. Housing is economic development, and it needs to be kind of brought up to the top of the ladder in regard to the attention of the community. Norfolk's done a terrific job, you have terrific organizations and terrific individual partners, but we do stress, you know, a community-wide partnership. So, the five-year housing action plan of the 762 units under standard trend analysis, not the boost, but the 762 units, we start to list some primary housing partners on page 30, and then we also, just for the purpose of making sure that housing is done correctly, we have a new concept in there, 31, which is base, place-based development components, which is very important. So, in other words, when you build housing in the community, you take in consideration some of these place-based components, and that's a kind of a new concept associated with housing planning and housing studies. But following that, we just sort of take off and start to list a number of different housing activities that we're recommending for a housing partnership to be involved with, both organizational-type activities, funding-type activities, as well as being a little bit more specific about new rental units for different income categories, different owner units, different housing types, new styles for the community, it's all addressed in here. And oftentimes, council and leadership in the community say, well, who's going to do all this? Well, the housing agency ordered it up, they do an excellent job, but there again, you have some good partnerships in the community that can join hands with them. And you as council should always be interested in housing, I know you are, and ask questions about what's going on with housing today in the community. You do have currently a vacancy shortage in the community, you just don't have enough housing out there, modern housing of different choices and price products, and so you need to address that. But in the housing action plan is a laundry list of different types of projects. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention, but not go through all of them. At the tail end of this document, this summary, we do include some important different statistical tables. I'd like to address these with you just briefly. On page 38, for example, on page 38 where it says Table 1, I talked about that 762 units under standard, under the target, the total target goal, that 762 units under standard trend analysis for a community that's growing, a community that lacks current housing, you have a vacancy shortage and things of that nature, and then we also have the 894, which is the economic boost. And at a minimum, and I don't talk about minimums very much, but I have identified there 443 units. So, I'm trying to cover all layers for you, Mayor and Council, just to make sure that it's understood that there is a housing demand in this community. By building new housing, you're going to increase your real estate tax base, which in turn creates better services, and you all know that as elected officials. So, this is the summary of the housing study, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. I think Lonnie can answer questions, too, and again, it was a pleasure to work on it, to work with the steering committee on it.
Questions, you can.
It's perfect. It's perfect, isn't it? It's kind of a hard act to follow after all, swearing in and the former mayor. Sue was wonderful to work with, I gotta tell you that, and I know Josh will be, too. But if you don't have any questions, or if your questions come up, contact us. don't have any questions, or if your questions come up, contact us, that sort of thing, talk to Gary, and he can provide you some information as well. But the whole document, which is about 146 pages, we'll get that on the, get that on the website, the city website.
Tim, I'll just say, appreciate the work on this. Obviously, housing is a major challenge not only in our community, but across the state, communities our size. And you said something, housing is economic development. I think we have really seen that to be the case, as our economic development efforts have evolved somewhat in recent years to put housing on a center stage. One question I would have, just generally, you have, obviously you have time to digest all this, but you've identified a number of units to shoot for over five years. Oftentimes, we get questions about, well, we know there's a housing challenge and shortage. Where is it felt most? Would it be fair to say that from what you've found here, that we need housing across the board, all of the above, from rentals to single-family beyond? Or did you find a specific need that's, that's something we should emphasize more than others?
For a community like Norfolk, across the board, and there has to be housing initiatives or housing plans of action for each different family income sector. Also important to continue to provide, this community provides wonderful services to persons with special needs. To be quite honest with you, they do an excellent job with that. And that always needs to be on the table, making sure that there's people with special needs that need, you know, affordable and decent housing. At the same token, this is a very attractive community to build an upper-priced product type of house as well, you know, in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. I think that you're, there's going to be a need to look at different new styles of housing, you know, patio homes are important now, townhomes, things of this nature. And that's all addressed in there. It's a good question, Mayor, but it's all addressed in the study. So across the board, there's a need for housing. And you as elected officials kind of got to watch that there just isn't housing built in one particular household or income sector group, and make sure that it's being addressed across the board. And you have enough partners in this area involved in housing that that shouldn't, you know, that shouldn't be a problem. Housing takes money. We discussed that there's a number of different products of intervention, the tax income and financing, things of that nature, community development block grants, home funds, private funding, bond financing, a lot of different funding sources out there to assist you and provide you any particular gap financing that you may need for any particular income group. So it's out there. Developers who know that business know that. But it's always, it's important always to double-check each housing pro forma that comes in front of you as it relates to new housing in the community, and make sure that it fits, fits with your community. So, and you all know what fits better than I do. But I do make recommendations in the study.
Well, again, we appreciate the work and hope to use this now as something that sits on the shelf, but as a platform for new development, especially in conjunction with the finalization of our conference.
Important here is that you created a partnership, another partnership with the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, excellent group. They have brand-new, they've got a new workforce housing initiative out that they're starting to finance, and so it's all out there. But again, my appreciation to have the opportunity to work in Norfolk.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, moving on, special presentation of Woodland Park update. I think we're looking to Dennis.
Well, Mayor and Council, we were just going to give a very quick update on the Woodland Park situation. Basically, it's nearing completion, very near completion. The basin, everything's in. The one thing we're waiting on yet is the automated valve, and that would be the automatic valve that will discharge the lagoon back into the, into the city sewer system after basically a rain event. That's scheduled to be here probably late January, early February, sometime, you know, in that timeframe. The good thing is, though, we do have a manual valve that is able to basically, that is shut all the time unless we need to empty that after a rain event. So I think Todd and I, we both agree that the city is protected from any rain events that we would have in, in the Woodland Park from, from that area. One thing that has to be done yet, and we talked, we sent an email to the JEO engineer, we'll be visiting with him very shortly, is that manual valve I talked about is supposed to have a lock, basically a locking cover, so it does not get inadvertently opened, because that would negate the whole, you know, basin. So we feel very strongly that that should be finished yet, and the city would be protected in our case, you know, in our opinion, with that locking valve. And it was in the drawings and the plan. So that's one that we're hoping to get finished up this year yet, and that way, you know, like I said, the city would be completely protected from any rain event in, in the Woodland Park system.
Just like to add, we appreciate the council and mayor's expertise and help throughout this process, as well as Clint, Shane, and Dennis Smith's expertise in negotiating the contracts and the basin that we have out there that, well, protects the system and homeowners downstream.
Like, some of you get probably started in 2008 is when we started having this issue. So it's been a couple of years. But again, as Todd said, we do appreciate, I mean, you know, the engineering folks, I mean Shane, Clint, I mean, all the, you know, mayor, council, a lot of very good. And, you know, Woodland Park, they, I think, you know, have kind of come on board, you know, you know, their attorney, Mark Fitzgerald, I think has been very helpful, also their board. So it's, it's a good project to be nearing completion.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks again. It was a long, arduous journey. Thank you for your focus and dedication on it. Moving on, public hearings. Looking for questions. You open the public hearing. You're going to open a public hearing to consider blighted and substandard declaration for the area referred to as the northwest corner of 13th Street and Omaha Avenue redevelopment area. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The city contracted with the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District to conduct a blight and substandard study of this, the northwest corner of 13th and Omaha. The area has been identified as possible for redevelopment going forward, or parts of it at least for, for this area. And this study is really the initial step to encourage redevelopment and put some new investment into that intersection. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the declaration, and Jan Merrill and Tom Higginbotham are here to present their findings. And of course, I'd be available for any questions.
Jan Merrill with Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. So the northwest corner of 13th and Omaha Avenue has met the substandard and blighted criterias. There are seven buildings in that area, and four of those seven buildings are rated poor or fair, which is 57%. The age of the buildings in that area are average of 41 years. Four of them are over 40 years. And then there is the combination of factors which is conducive to ill health or transmission of disease and is detrimental to public health and safety. And those are, there's a substantial number of stored tires in that area. The tires can harbor pools of water, and in those pools of water can be infested with insects. There's also have identified some tubs and barrels which may contain some contaminants. And there's a large pile of rubber tubing which can become infested with rodents, and those conditions can pose health and safety concerns. And that pretty much sums up that corner.
Any questions for Jan?
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Open to any other comments?
I just have, my name's Bruce Finley, and I just have a real quick question. What exactly constitutes blighting? It's just when, like, insects or something can be harbored in there, or is it mold? Is it, like, dilapidated property or something that could grow mold? Is it standing pools of water? What exactly compromises the blighting? Sign in real quick.
It's a combination of those and many other factors. As Jan described, the age factor is one of the criteria. It's got to be more than one building, 40-plus years is the criterion that she identified in blighting this area.
All of those terms and requirements are spelled out.
Insects. Yes, Your Honor?
All right. And this is, this is the spot west of Courtesy Ford?
No, this spot is 13th and Omaha Avenue, which would be the northwest corner of 13th and Omaha Avenue where Express Auto is, that area, that general area in there. So the number of buildings on that corner.
Right, right. So it's the, it's the side that has the Courtesy Auto, or no, the, what was it again?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're, you're correct. There is a Courtesy, there is Courtesy Ford across the street. So when you said Courtesy, I apologize.
Yeah.
I was thinking downtown. But yes, so yes, it is. It's west of the, that corner.
I don't like this idea of using TIF in this situation, because right across the street, there's a different auto dealership. And what I see taking place here is picking of winners and losers that the city council seems to be doing. And this is very dangerous because it takes away the citizens' right to vote with their dollar on the businesses they feel need it. Was any of the local people asked to come in and help them with maybe, you know, doing some volunteer work beforehand? Of course not. What, what they did immediately was they applied for this so they could get their tax break. And ultimately, the problem with that is it's worse than just a tax break, because the city council is saying it's okay for you to pay less taxes and not pay your fair share, and instead, you can pay your taxes to the banks. I'm massively against this, as I was before. And I had, I had a picture, but I didn't bring it. It, it didn't print off, but all the others did, of Courtesy Ford across the street. There is actually a problem there, something that the city council should be concerned with. But because they're dealing with all of this tax stuff, they're not paying attention to the stuff that actually affects citizen's safety. What happens when you're walking from the auto place that has the, the blight over to Courtesy Ford? Well, Courtesy Ford has a light. It's got a light that shines on its plot, and it shines down in the same, just about the same height as the crosswalk sign. And its light is white. So sometimes when you come to that intersection at night, and I had a picture that showed it, but I didn't print it off, and I feel really stupid about that, you can sometimes mistake it for walking across the street. And me and my friend almost walked out into the intersection one night because of this. And that's something that it's kind of a private property thing, but the city should probably be more invested in dealing with something like that that actually puts people at risk, because this could be mistaken, than getting tax breaks to select businesses. The other thing is, when you're determining, like you said, blighted property, you're not really looking at certain things that are blighted here in Norfolk. There's all kinds of other blighted buildings that the poor in South Norfolk have problems with. Those blighted things don't get any of this, this tax break. They don't get anything like that. And I've got a couple pictures here I want to show you. The top picture shows a blighted shed and a blighted car. The other picture shows the side of a building that's very blighted. And when the city's choosing who wins and who loses, it causes a real problem for people like that who don't get it. What about the people who have blighted bodies and they have to pay big medical bills and stuff? I don't think our city knows any better than the central planners in China what best to invest in. I believe, wholeheartedly, in the citizens' right to vote with their dollar to decide what's best for our community. I think when our money is used to pay for taxes and businesses are selected that don't have to pay them, and they're given an exemption to that, it leads to crony capitalism. It lets the city set up under-the-table deals that no one else has any way of knowing exist. Just put them in there. It gives them the opportunity to do that. I, I just, I don't see why anyone would vote for this when the citizens are the ones who should be involved in this. Again, when you look at the nine-story building that got the TIF funding before, well, what about the, the poor one-story house that just about fell down across from my street? It was just like a block north of me. They didn't get that. It's just, it's, you're selectively choosing who wins and who loses. And you're not going to choose any better than China with their big, empty cities that nobody lives in. I'm just, I'm just asking you to stop stealing our right to vote with our own dollars.
Okay, Bruce, thanks for your time. I would note that this is, it is an open process. The blighting process is an open process and can be requested of any area throughout our community. And for the sake of everybody's time, I, I think we've gotten your point on that. I'll let you make a comment here real quick.
Yeah, real quick.
We do need to move on.
How many poor people's houses got TIF financing? How many poor people who have mortgages on their house got TIF financing? You're, these people are sharecroppers, and they're just being thrown out of their land by this kind of stuff, you know? It's just the same thing. The same crony capitalism still exists that we had back during the Dust Bowl and the Great Depression.
Your Honor, would you like me to...
No.
No.
But I think we can move on. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Do we have any discussion? When we counsel? If not, then please report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the blight and substandard determination study for area referred to as the northwest corner of 13th and Omaha Avenue redevelopment area. On November 22nd, 2016, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the declaration of the northwest corner of 13th and Omaha Avenue redevelopment area as blighted and substandard on a seven-to-zero vote.
Okay. At this point, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to consider Resolution 2016-64 declaring the area referred to as the northwest corner of 13th Street and Omaha Avenue redevelopment area as blighted and substandard.
Your Honor, I would offer Resolution 2016-64.
Second.
Consideration.
Discussion. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2016-64 is adopted.
Okay, Action Item 25. I look for a motion to, on this, adjourn as a city council, as a Board of Equalization, to consider levying a small assessment in the amount of $325.67 against the property at 203 North Pine Street for mowing, weed control, litter removal, and property maintenance.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay. Who are we hearing from? Ms. Valerie?
No, that would be me.
Oh, okay.
The property at 203 North Pine Street was notified, the property owner was notified of the mowing and property maintenance that needed to occur to meet city code regulations, and they did not comply. And so the city staff went in and mowed. And once that happens, then we do bill for those charges. The charges have not been paid yet, and then we can file a lien against the property. This is the normal procedure to file that lien, and it runs with the land until it's paid. Any questions?
The city mowed the property, right? And it was only mowed once? Just one, one time?
Yes.
For 300 and how much was it?
$325.67. Three twenty-five, sixty cents.
Three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it must have been like an acre of land.
Was for mow, I'm sorry.
Mowing, weed control, litter removal, and property maintenance, so.
Three hundred dollars is a month's supply of food and meals for someone like me. It's more than that.
What if it has like five hundred trees stacked up? And three hundred is pretty cheap.
No, I agree, I agree. But what I'm saying is, did you check to make sure that you're not putting this person out of food first? Did you ask any of the neighbors if they would be willing to do it for free?
This is a case in which the city had to take these efforts because the property owner was, was not meeting requirements.
Right, of course.
Most of the time, it's the neighbors complaining because it looks like that. And you probably wouldn't like living next to someone that doesn't take care of their property, and you'd come to us and ask us to help you.
Which is exactly my point. People give up their private property rights so that they can use the city to force other people to do things on their property. This opens up the door for all kinds of problems. One very good example of this is the TransCanada Pipeline, where a foreign corporation comes in and uses our own government against us, threatening people with a massive abuse of eminent domain to take our own land by force. The city does the same thing, fines, taxes, condemning the property. This is the exact same thing. It's very dangerous to give up your private property rights. And three hundred and twenty-five dollars? I, I need some justification to know that this isn't just some fraudulent fine or something that you just.
Bruce, I think.
It's very easy to put a big fine on people and punish them.
The work that was done at this property that wasn't being maintained.
Anything else you want me to say?
Any further discussion, Ms. and the council? No, I think we need a motion to adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as city council.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Next, I would consider approval of Resolution Number 2016-65, levying a special assessment in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents against property at two oh three North Pine Street for weed control, litter removal, and property maintenance.
Your Honor, I move consideration of Resolution 2016-65.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2016-65 is adopted.
Action item number twenty-seven. I would open a public hearing at the request of Paul Philmeyer for hard-surfacing modification on property at thirty-two West Eisenhower Avenue. Val, can you tell us about this?
Yes, thank you. This property is West Eisenhower. It's the same property that has recently been rezoned from Ag to SR and replatted to three-acre lots. Now, a house is being built on one of those three-acre lots, and our code says that when new buildings get built, you will pave from the existing road up to your parking areas. And they are requesting a hard-surface waiver. And what we did at Planning Commission, since we had a subcommittee meeting to discuss revising that section of code to potentially say seventy-five feet long from the edge of pavement by a minimum ten feet wide, that is the recommendation that Planning Commission went with for the hard-surfacing waiver. Even though the code has not been through and approved yet, the hard-surfacing waiver allows them to, to keep their project moving along while we are working on that code revision. So the actual resolution that you have in your packet from Planning Commission says a minimum of seventy-five feet long by ten feet wide from the edge of the existing hard surface of Eisenhower Avenue. Unless the code section requiring hard service is amended to require other than seventy-five feet, then the amended code shall be followed. So that kind of gives the people an out, too, if the code changes whenever that comes before you.
Okay, any questions for Val on that? Have you stated your name and sign in, please?
This is Paul Philmeyer. I'm the one who lives at that location, or is building there. Seventy-five feet, that's better than paving the entire thing. Don't get me wrong. But my goal is to not, not pave anything at all. When I, when I, when I look at all the, the house, houses and the driveways, the alleys, the streets in Norfolk that don't have any, any paving, paving on them, and I see all the waivers that have come before me, I'm just, I'm just asking that the precedence is not set that I'm the first guy that, hey, the seventy-five feet is gonna apply to Paul and instead of granting waivers that have been done in the past. When, when I walked, you know, when I drove along even just on Eisenhower, I see there's twenty-one houses between Thirteenth and Thirty-seventh Street that are not paved. And, and then there's ten houses that have it paved. And out of those ten, there's a lot of, a lot of them are broken up, concrete that need to be redone. Some of them are, are brand-new, obviously, concrete. But I see a lot of them are broken up that, they need to redo it anyway. So I'm just, I'm asking for a waiver. Any questions for me there?
Mr. Philmeyer, you, you would be okay, though, if that's, I mean, with the permit as, as approved by the Planning Commission, you're okay with that?
Well.
Ten by seventy-five is seven hundred and fifty square feet of concrete, so.
I definitely take that over the full driveway. Don't get me wrong.
No, I understand.
I would rather not do that, but I also don't want to delay all my projects. I would like, I'd like to have the waiver. I just, you know, you know, I understand you don't want the gravel on, on the pavement that breaks up the pavement over time. But, you know, I see, I see like Valley High, and I know that's outside city limits. It's city jurisdiction. It's within that city umbrella. But Valley High, there's Sheridan Drive, there's Grove Avenue, Fifteenth, Fifteenth Street, part of Fifteenth, Birch Street, Hillcrest Circle. All these are, are, some of them are city streets at least, or within that two-mile jurisdiction. And I see that they're not paved. And at least I'm outside where there's, there's no sewers that collect this gravel that need, that need this cleaned up. It just goes off into the ditch, just like what out on the highway.
And, and I understand that point, but I also understand that, you know, you, you may just happen to be the first of many. You know, a lot of the streets and areas that you noted, it's hard to go back to the past and correct all that immediately that way. But it, to continue allowing it to occur is probably an error also that way, so. It just so happens that you happen to be maybe the, the first one that way. So although I believe there's another one just after you, so.
Made me laugh. I know there's, there's other waivers up, up as well tonight. And I know, I know Matt, Matt's interested in talking about this. And, and I know that if, if this is, you know, if you approve, say, the seventy-five feet and ten, ten feet wide, that, that, that standard's gonna be set for everyone going forward. So, so I would like you, you to hear what Matt has to say as well. And I know he's not talking about my property, but he's talking about the next one, which is really along the same lines.
A question. So we're, we're list, we're, we're hearing a waiver tonight. However, the code we're gonna implement isn't in place yet because we're actively changing it.
That's correct. The code has not been heard by Planning Commission or the council. This is based on what was discussed at subcommittee to move that forward to those council and commission.
Would it be more appropriate at that time to talk, to have, to talk about these waivers once we have the code in place?
We consider, I think we consider that as staff in, in that subcommittee, but in an effort to, there was a desire, I believe, by Mr. Philmeyer and, and Matt and some others to keep their project moving forward. So in an effort to try to accommodate that, that subcommittee was had, and those things were discussed, and we're floating this idea out there in an effort to accommodate your construction schedule. If they prefer us to wait for the code to be implemented, we sure could do that. But currently, the code says the whole thing should be paved.
Well, we're, we're at the end of the season now. You mean, you're not paving now till? I'm just, I'm not, but I would think it would be, I'd, if I was in your, I'd feel way more comfortable knowing what the code's gonna be.
Going forward.
You know, I, we, we've gotta have a lot of discussion on the code, too. And I think there will be discussion about how this shakes out. It may not be the seventy-five foot by ten, but.
Is it also worth considering, is it necess, if, if, if you do push forward with seventy-five feet, is it necessary to be seventy-five? Can it be a lesser amount? Because I don't think I need to shake my tires off for seventy-five feet. Is there a more realistic amount of concrete instead of doing the full seventy-five feet?
Well, that's what the item two covers in the waiver, though, too, because it does allow it if that, if and when that changes. Right now, the way that the code reads is that you're all the way in. And so item one lets you go to ten by seventy-five, and item two says pursuant any change unless a new modification of hard-surfacing requirement is granted. So that flexibility's still out there. But it's, like you noted, it's, it's better than the whole thing.
It is.
So.
Still hoping for less than seventy-five feet. Thanks, guys. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Paul, you do feel like you wanna keep, you do wanna keep going?
You mean, talking?
With your, with your construction.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't see how this slows him up, though. We don't have a code in place. So you, you don't really, you have no idea what we're gonna require of you. Is it gonna be, because we're gonna have to have all those.
Well, we, except that we do have a code in place.
The current one, correct. But that's not gonna happen this construction season.
No, but the code is still in place.
Same with all these people that are sitting here tonight. So I'm not, I think, like, you know, I think there's gotta be a lot of discussion about this before we, anyway.
Yeah, well, I think that part of the challenges here is, is that, as Councilman Lady stated, we've had, in our history, a number of waivers granted, and we, we can't go back and change that now. And we're running into some of the, the challenges that come with those waivers being granted and now development approaching on those areas. And certainly understand your concern about you being the one, the first one this could potentially fall upon.
People are gonna talk about me for years.
What's that?
If I'm the first one, people will talk about me for years, and I don't, I don't need that.
You'll be a legend. Well, we, we are in the midst of a public hearing. I would invite, if there's no more questions for Paul, invite to any other comment.
Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
Hey, I'm Matt Gilmore, and I'm up next on the agenda. So I don't know, I'm trying to keep my comments directed towards Paul's situation instead of mine, because they're a little bit different. Let me sign in real quick. Just to piggyback on what Paul was saying, you know, it's been the, sort of the precedence of the Planning Commission and the city council to grant hard-surface waivers in, in the past, all the way up from, you know, at least up to 2015, where these things started being brought to a public hearing-type situation. The first one was the Cut Singer Farm in 2015. And there were only two hard-surface public hearing requests in 2015. And then 2016 has kind of exploded. And I don't know, and I would just ask the city council to consider, you know, maintaining the same precedence until the new city code has been adopted. Because we already have a precedence of at least six homeowners of waiving their hard-surface situation in 2016. And so I don't know, really, if it would be feasible to hold a residential, or Paul or myself on from continuing on without any kind of code in place to, to give that. That, that would be one thing that I would invite the city council to consider. The other thing I would invite you to consider is, is the seventy-five feet thing. You know, the way it was brought to my attention at the city Planning Commission on how they came up with a number of seventy-five feet, well, somebody said a hundred and fifty, and somebody said twenty, and they kind of settled in the middle of, of seventy-five feet. And while, boy, I am appreciative that it's not the whole lane, because our lane's like seven hundred feet. You know, seventy-five feet, that's real dollars. And, and on the bid that I got, we're talking nine dollars a square foot for six inches of concrete. I've got combines that come across and grain trailers that are gonna come across. I'm gonna have to go eight inches. And MMB told me it's gonna be in the neighborhood of eleven dollars. TDK said, you're gonna have to put headers. I don't even know what a header is. You're gonna have to put six, it's gonna be sixteen dollars a square foot. So I'm hoping that the city council would consider approving these waiver requests because of the precedence that has already been established over the last few years and without a code in place. Because right now, it's just kind of gesture of what's coming down the pike. Just something to consider. Anybody got any questions?
Questions for Matt?
I guess I got a question for Val. How long are these waivers in effect for?
The ones before you right now are, essentially, they don't have a time limit on them because we are expecting the code change to come through. Normally, the waivers that I've seen in the past have been anywhere from five to ten years because these waivers are supposed to be a phasing project. So if you have a five-hundred-foot-long driveway, you have five years, and you can do all five hundred feet at the same time, or you can do a hundred each year, or whatever you would like to do. So previously, these code, these waivers were essentially a phasing in that the whole thing from street to parking would eventually get paved. But since we're planning on the new code being put in where there's a limit, seventy-five or whatever gets decided on, then between the parking of your garage and that ending, you can have whatever you want in between, whether it's gravel, or rock, or dirt. So there really is no time limit necessarily on the ones before you right now.
Okay. So I guess, looking at it from the previous, the way it's written, then in five years, if we come to you guys and say we gotta have all seven hundred feet of it?
Uh, no, you know, not really.
I mean, that, that's the scary part to me, is today, concrete costs this much money. In five to ten years, it costs five times, ten times more.
Yep.
So I guess we need to come, figure out how to come to a common, with the citizens and with staff and everybody, figure out a way to come into a common area. So if you guys do have to put it in, and they have, what, five years?
Normally, it's five to ten, I've seen on these waivers.
So we could waive it, and you could do the seventy-five feet in three years, or five years, or ten years. Like you said, do whether it's a square, ten by ten, or it's.
Yeah.
Ten by seventy-five. Then you have to put it in.
Yeah. I mean, from a personal standpoint, I'd rather put it off because I just don't have it right now.
Yeah.
To, to put that kind of expense into a driveway. And my situation's a little bit different. I'll talk about it next. But yeah.
I just wanna try to find a common.
Yeah.
Common sense approach to fixing this problem. Because it is a problem. I see it all through the community. We're trying to fix it. And once again, it's trying to like asking people to put sidewalks in.
I know, it's a sore issue. I don't wanna be in, in your shoes.
It's a difficult process, but it has to start at someplace.
Yeah. I did talk to Rod Weber from the Nebraska Department of Roads, even as late as today. And he's familiar with our property. And, you know, the state requirement's like fifteen feet. And, you know, they, they got a throat thing, too, but it's basically fifteen feet. And, you know, when we're talking about seventy-five feet times ten feet and the state requirement of being fifteen, then the city is asking residents to not only go twice as much as the state requirement, or three times, or four times, but more than, you know, five times the state requirement. And I don't know if that's, you know, to me, it just, I just consider, is that excess or not? You know, for the, because Paul and I are both outside of the city limits. We're in that two- or three-mile halo situation.
Any other questions for Matt? Thanks.
I don't have a question, but I think the, the other ones that we have had waivers on that we passed was gravel to gravel and not gravel to concrete. I think that's what we need to keep.
There is Porter Construction got a waiver in January of 2015 on his Porter pit, ten-year, a ten-year waiver. I don't know about the other ones. The, the Drys Meyers. The, the Dries Meyer on 2101 South Victory Road got a ten-year waiver. Doug Denny, their family at 800 Andy's North Shore, got a waiver. Alvin and Susan Beckman, I'm not sure what their drive situation, 1104 East Park. So, there are some hard, gravel-to-hard-service waivers that have been given.
To build on your own property, you have to pay for an expensive road upgrade that isn't needed. Ultimately, our government's first priority and greatest purpose should always be to protect and enhance our inalienable rights. To do this, it must provide a system of justice that empowers the rights and enforces legal consent in contracts. I don't see consent here among the people who live in the area. Let the landowners in the area who want the road upgrade to fund it themselves. Let them decide to fund it themselves. Don't make them do it. If, if you really have to get this road done for some reason, start donations. People in the city will give money for that. But forcing people to pay for something like this isn't the way to do it. It isn't an American thing to do. Instead of making men come here and beg our AmeriStan Commerce SARS to not put in this road for this crony capitalism boondoggle, I ask that you vote no for this and stop doing this in my town.
Thanks, Bruce. Just one quick question for maybe Shane, Staff, or whatever. How's the process gonna go to develop this code? Can you just kind of run through the guidelines of how we're gonna do? Are we gonna run that through Subcommittee, then to Planning and Zoning, and then?
We have joint Subcommittee with Planning Commission
Okay.
And the City Council. Through that process, the seventy-five feet was determined. As you know, the code does state that it shall all be paid. As that makes its way through Planning Commission, which it has already, it'll come in front of the Council for the final decision-making, if that's what you're asking, Council.
Wanna know when the, when we'll be voting on the code, when we're gonna change the code, or if we're gonna, you know, how we're gonna adopt this?
We got to get it final, in its final form, and then we'll present it in front of the Council. The exact date?
So, is that, is that, that has not been in front of Planning and Zoning, though?
No.
Just what's before us has.
This has been through Planning.
Yes, this has, but not the code.
Right, the code is not, but this waiver has.
The waiver has, yeah, the code will come forth through Planning.
That's why I'm having trouble with this, because we don't have a code in We have a code in place. We have a code in place.
Code in place is for paving.
Yeah.
All of it. Right. And one thing I would say is we
But what we're implying in this waiver is that we're going to accept the new code of seventy-five feet by ten that hasn't been done.
Right.
That's where I'm
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we haven't, if you haven't embraced that, you haven't heard that, Planning Commission hasn't heard that code as of yet for seventy-five feet, which is a significant, obviously, reduction to what our current code said. No, one thing we struggle with is the community always, when we grow, we're growing, that's why we have an extra territory, territorial zoning, the halo effect that Matt talked about is around all communities by statute. Ours is two miles in first-class cities. So, as we continue to grow, we continue to plan and make those kind of provisions necessary for an orderly growth of the community, so we have good hard surfacing and good attractive, attractive properties that aren't interfering with the hard surfacing that the taxpayers in general have paid for already, and that's really what, what this code drives at, at the end of the year.
Shane, am I correct if, if this passes, so Planning Commission brought this ahead to us on their vote of seventy-five foot as a recommendation? If we pass that as the waiver, and then the city code changes to be, say, sixty-foot instead of seventy-five when it finally comes to us, then that would ultimately change their
I think that's, I think, as it's described in your, in your packets, I think that's what would occur, absolutely. You have that ability to do that, to adjust that number from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty, or sixty, or whatever.
Whatever it might be, then that would ultimately go back to them, and they would have to abide by that, is all we're saying?
That's what I understand, the packets.
So, that's, that's how I was reading, I just wanna make sure.
And when would the, when would the proposed code be ready?
I think the ordinance is still being worked on to, for a final draft, so probably sometime in January, I would hope to get it before Planning Commission, and then to you all after that.
Again, we're just trying to be good, give good customer service to the folks that wanted to keep moving on the project, so they're waiting on the decision-making of this file.
Well, I understand that, but it appears as though we're going to, to be asked to make a vote on something that, that hasn't been put into, into code yet.
Well, in, in a, in a sense, I would, I agree with that. I mean, that's the waiver. The waiver kind of opens that discussion up for you, for lack of a better word, Councilman, where you can make that adjustment in the waiver. The waiver doesn't mean all or nothing. It can be all or nothing, or somewhere in between, in my opinion, anyway, and I think that's what's, what we'd be creating, so we're waiting.
Couple, couple of things, if, if I may, to explain how you got here. If you look at this application that's before you here, it was received in October, October seventh of 2016. That's when this application was received, and of course, the code that's in place requires paving of its entirety unless there's a plan. When you look at this application, the application that came forward asked for an eight-year, an eight-year modification. The application that comes forward doesn't have attached to it any sort of the requirements that's in 27-351 that says you're supposed to provide a plan for when you're gonna do it, it just says, I'll pave it some later time. There was a meeting, the Subcommittee meeting, in the middle of November, that we looked at those that, of you that were there. There was a Subcommittee meeting, and that's where we got the direction that said, because we've had these, these requirements, and, and when you see the similarity of, of these things, and with many conditional use permits and whatever, we've seen track-out language with, 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 with an area of about that size. That was where the Council, or the Subcommittee, came forward with the Subcommittee, the Planning Commission, and the City Council. Council voted on it, the Subcommittee members from the Council voted on it and gave us the direction to, to generate that, that, that application. We've had hard surfacing requests like that, we've had those, those ordinances in a draft form for many, many years, and so, we're working on, on getting that accomplished. We have some other deadlines that are prior, that, that take precedence over that, and so this is merely nothing more than an application that was made under the existing law, more than a month before there was any discussion about changing it. And so, that's the history of how we got here, and so, this requests an eight-year waiver without any modification or any, any phase-in like that, which is required by the city code.
If there's no more discussion or comment, I would ask Beth for Planning Commission report.
On November 22nd, 2016, the Noffler Planning Commission reviewed the application for a modification of the hard surfacing requirement submitted by Paul Philmeyer. The application submitted followed City Code Section 27-351 and is requesting property, for the property located at 3201 West Eisenhower Avenue. The property connects to a hard-surfaced street, which is Eisenhower Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends a modification of the hard surfacing requirement and recommends the proposed modification on a seven to zero vote.
That, the public hearing is closed, and
So, can I get clarification, then, what's a yes vote mean, and what does a no vote mean? In this case?
On the resolution?
Well, the, the resolution, that's before you, which came with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, says that if you vote yes on that, on the resolution that's before you, it would require a paving of seventy-five foot from the edge of the roadway. If you were to vote no, the waiver would not be granted, and then the code that's in place now requires paving in its entirety. The other portion of the, of the resolution that's before you, which you talked about, Councilman, talks about that if, if there, I think Val's got it in there, that if, if there is an ordinance that resets a requirement of less than the seventy-five feet that was, that we were directed to prepare by the, by the Subcommittee, then, as I think Cory's question was, was if it's sixty-foot, if, if the ordinance that comes forward and the Council would make it be sixty-foot, then it would be
Better than all of it.
Then it would be, this resolution, this waiver would go from seventy-five back to sixty, if that makes any sense.
Okay, thank you.
One, real quick. The way we're setting this up, though, you, you could look at this and say, okay, I'm gonna vote for the seventy-five foot because of how I feel about this paving waiver, but you're really, but what if, okay, what if that changed and went to a hundred and fifty foot? You would change your vote at that point in time. It's like we're believing an open window on a yes vote that could be interpreted two different ways, because of what if it goes past seventy-five, what if it stays below seventy-five? I mean, you
Because, the, the thing that we'd have to remember, though, then, is that the resolution would be in place for, for them to have the seventy-five-foot waiver, and they would still have the opportunity always come back at that point in time. You know, I think the, the thing that we keep forgetting about is that, as, as Clint pointed out, and these waiver, I mean, paving waivers have been going on for over twenty-five years, and a lot of them earlier on did come in with the phasing portions. There was actual drawing showing how they were going to accomplish it. It's only been in probably the last ten or so years that that's been, that actually has kind of failed, and is probably not a, not a really good thing, because, case in point, the church on Benjamin Avenue in the corner there, and this was back in the nineties, came in with a paving waiver for them to get into their parking lot, and it was granted, and they had, they had a three-year plan that they laid out, and every year, they paved additional portions of it, so.
All right. Right now, guys, we're in between a public hearing and consideration of the resolution, so I think we move on at this point to, to further discussion within consideration of Resolution Number 2016-66, approving the hard surfacing, surfacing modification for Paul Philmeyer on property addressed at 3201 West Eisenhower Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of Resolution 2016-66.
Second.
Further discussion?
Well, we're, okay, we've got three more resolutions here, or three more resolutions below, below this one, about essentially the same thing. So, aren't we just essentially saying, okay, here's our precedence off this vote? Let's move through this? You know, so we're in a public hearing about each additional one, although we're setting precedence on, right now, on a code we don't yet have.
Well, Staff? And I have to disagree with you that we're setting precedents. We're not really setting precedents, because they're, address each piece of property separately. Even though it may be addressed as seventy-five foot here, we're addressing each one separately, and it's the same on other paving waivers that are, to a much larger extent, larger areas, just because we said that ten years ago that you, they had to pave all the way into their parking lot, we're not doing that here. So, the, the idea and the, the summarization that we're setting precedence, I feel is inaccurate.
These are structured as the same
But we're gonna, we're gonna, and about, we're gonna set, we're gonna vote each one the same, the next two resolutions, we're gonna vote the same, requiring seventy-five foot, so we just stated, without any further real discussion about the code, that seventy-five foot is where we're taking this thing, without hearing any arguments about why seventy-five, if seventy-five's the right way, if it's not the right way, if it's, you know, I'm, I almost feel like we should have discussion about what the code essentially is going to be, before you feel comfortable by making a vote on a waiver.
Well, if, if that's the case, then, then vote against the resolution, so that isn't even there, then.
But you're hamstrung on this already, because if you vote against it, then you're putting full paving on it. It's kind of a pick, you're, so you're getting looped into how you have to vote on this, and I don't, don't like it.
I, I'm not sure if that's really accurate, Councilman. You, you, I understand what you're saying with the seventy-five feet, but keep in mind what the code currently says. This was a compromise that was brought through the Planning Commission and, like, and Subcommittee of the City Council. Orders were given to Staff to create this ordinance that way.
I'm getting, I understand, but I'm getting a compromise that hasn't, doesn't have anything behind it.
If they don't pave tomorrow, and that code comes out, and it's something different than seventy-five feet, it seems to me that they, they have that ability to embrace that
If this was May first, or September, you know, first part of construction season, I can see where this would be extremely important, that they would know, need to know where they're gonna be, but it's gonna get, we're done pouring. Maybe tomorrow, but that's it. I think we have time to
But, but it's up to them to pull it if they wanna pull it, right? That's not us. And it sounds like, I mean, and Paul still has the opportunity, I guess, I think, to pull it, but it sounds like he wanted us to move forward, which is, that's why we're in that predicament, I guess.
I'll stop arguing.
I assume that's
Can I just table it right now? Table it until there's a decision made, as far as what's, what's agreed on later on? Any of your Subcommittees?
You won't be first, if you do. Oh, you might not be.
That may be a wise
There's
Thing to ask for.
There's nothing stopping any Councilmember from offering a motion to table this particular resolution in front of us. I guess would be my best
That would be my best answer to that. Um, you would, sir, if
The public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing is closed, so technically, we're not in an opportunity to take comment. At this point, we have to make a decision as to whether we go forward on, and vote on what's before us, or there's further discussion on, on tableing our decision, that decision, have further discussion on it.
I'd, I'd make the, make the motion that we table Resolution 2016-66.
Second.
There's further discussion on that motion?
You had a motion.
We've got a motion and a second on the board.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah. We have to vote on that.
Yeah, we, yeah, unless there's any further discussion on the original motion, which is consideration of the resolution before us, I would ask for your vote.
Voting in favor, Councilmembers Langy, Merrill, Jackson, Faust File. Voting against the motion, Granquist, Clausen, and Muirin.
Motion carries, correct?
Motion carries, yes, I'm sorry.
With that, we would move ahead to open the public hearing, at the request of Matthew B. and Amanda M. Gilmore for a hard surfacing modification of property at 1406 Channel Road.
Thank you again. Appreciate you guys, appreciate Val and everybody, and what you're, what you guys deal with day in and day out. The property that we're talking about is at 1406 Channel Road. It's sort of like Highway 24, right there behind the Progressive Nutrition Building. It's, it's zoned, industrial. I've got the property that's in the back, and I kind of have the easement from the highway to where our property begins, and the easement is probably, I'm, I'm just guessing, a hundred and fifty feet, until my property actually begins. And, and again, when I was, I was talking to, and I don't know what to say, 'cause I feel like I'm gonna catch 22 here, but when I was talking to Rod today, we meet all the state requirements in that driveway, which I don't own the part that intersects into the highway, we meet all the, the minimum state requirements, it's not even fifteen feet, and, and he said he's very satisfied with the way that's set up, and the way they determine whether or not they need to increase that footage is dependent upon the type of permit that's pulled. You know, for example, if I was going to build a truck-serving thing, and, and the traffic's gonna increase, what we're doing is not gonna increase the traffic, we're just wanna put up a twenty-four by twenty-four garage-type situation and some storage. There was an old shed that was on there, but it was really kind of dangerous and falling down. So, we, our family and I, we pulled it out, and from what I understand, I probably should have kept a little footprint, because I think if I could have called it a remodel, it probably wouldn't be before you today, but the shed that it's going up is smaller than the one that existed, and it's going up right in the same place where the, the previous shed was. You know, my, my question again is, you know, the seventy-five feet, and again, I think it's great that you guys are allowing us not to have to do the whole lane, but just the way we're determining the seventy-five feet, you know, why not fifteen, why not twenty-five? I got a bid for what, what would be required of our family, and, and six inches of concrete going sixty feet, because I already have fifteen feet, is fifty and, and six inches of concrete going 60 feet, because I already have 15 feet, is $5,400. And I got to add another $1,360 and $60 for eight inches, and another 500 for rebar. And it's just, I just think it's a bit excessive, especially when you consider the median, you know, the median income for the, for a family in Norfolk is like $54,000. You know, we're talking almost 15% of a person's income to, you know, do something that is really not going to serve a whole lot of purpose. And, and our property is in an industrial area. And again, Porter Pit is out there, they got a 10 year waiver. The city waste management area is right on Monroe, it's not paved. I mean, most of the property out there, even the roads, are not paved yet. And so I just ask you guys to consider that.
Point of clarity on Porter, Matt and Mayor and Council, they had a two year waiver for that first 100 feet, and that was due, if I remember right, that was due because the county is coming in there and resurfacing Victory Road, I believe it is. And so he had a two year, and he has to do that 100 feet, which is coming up soon.
What was the 10 year waiver they got in January? Didn't it say 10 years, on January 10th, January 5th of 2015?
Yes, there, there was two portions of the project that they needed to do. They needed to pave from the street all the way to their scale and scale house for the handicap parking that's required there. The waiver required them to pave the first 100 feet. And it would have required it to be paved immediately, except for the fact that the county was coming in to redo the road. So they got a two year waiver on the first 100 feet. They've got the 10 year waiver on the balance to get back to the required parking places next to the scale house. So you look at it quickly, it looks like a 10 year waiver. It's a 10 year waiver on, on getting it all done, but it's the phase thing that Val talked about previously. With the first 100 feet being due basically immediately, it was delayed for two years because of the construction anticipated.
Okay, thank you. Still, I mean, we're talking Porter Pit. How many trucks are coming in and out of there every day? How many cars are coming out of our house? It's just cars, I mean, you know, four or five times maybe a day.
Thank you, Matt. Any further questions for Matt? We are in a public hearing period. If there's anyone else who cares to comment, that would be the time. Seeing you, Beth, Planning Commission?
On November 22nd, 2016, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the application for a modification of the hard surfacing requirement submitted by Matthew B. and Amanda M. Gilmore. The application submitted followed City Code Section 27-351 and is requested on property at 1406 Channel Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval, the proposed modification on a seven to zero vote.
With that, we move to consideration of Resolution Number 2016-67, approving the hard surfacing modification for Matthew B. and Amanda M. Gilmore on property addressed at, as 1406 Channel Road. Would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of Resolution 2016-67 as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Please vote.
Voting in favor of Resolution 2016-67, Councilmembers Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muirin, Jackson, Faust, File. Voting against the resolution, Councilman Clausen. Resolution 2016-67 is adopted.
Action Item 31, opening a public hearing at the request of Brian Cook for a hard surfacing modification on property at 105 Grandview Road. Do you have any public comments?
I'm Randy Backus, I'm representing Brian Cook. As a contractor, he wants to put up a three car garage. His, his property is on a gravel road. Grandview apparently is the dividing line from Stanton County to Madison County. The adjacent property is agriculture. I mean, this is easy. I, I just, you know, he, we're looking at about 100 feet of driveway onto a gravel road.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the council? If not, Planning Commission report, Beth?
On November 22nd, 2016, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the application for a modification of the hard surfacing requirements submitted by Brian Cook for property at 105 Grandview Road. The Planning Commission recommends the waiver expire when Grandview Road is paved in front of the Ingris and Egress Drive of the Cook property, and to give the owner one year to complete the hard surfacing requirement at that time. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the temporary waiver request with a seven to zero vote.
Item 32, consideration of Resolution Number 2016-68, approving the hard surfacing waiver for Brian Cook on property addressed as 105 Grandview Road. Do I have a motion?
I'd offer Resolution 2016-68 for consideration.
Second.
Discussion?
Now, this is the same thing, 75 foot? He commented 100 foot, it's on 100 foot to the garage.
No, it's not.
Gravel, a gravel.
And the resolutions differ in one year.
No further discussion, please vote.
All Councilmembers present voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2016-68 is adopted.
That takes care of everything on our agenda tonight. We are adjourned.